Good evening all, welcome to the June 13th, 2023 Regular Business Meeting of the Board of Education. I need a motion to call meeting to order, please.
Motion.
I need a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes, we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Good evening, Mrs. Springer. Tonight, our Pledge of Allegiance is led by Senior Patrol Leader of Boy Scout Troop 483 here in Hampton Bays, Christopher Marlowe.
My pledge allegiance is to the Lord. The Lord is our God. And to the Father, and to the Son, and to the Holy Spirit. In this holy and sacred place.
For anybody who's not familiar with the emergency exit, we have all the doors to the rear and two doors on the inside of the station. I need a motion for approval or agenda, please.
Motion.
I need a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. We will move to the approval minutes and do the court report.
Be resolved that the Board of Education accepts the minutes of the business meeting held May 13th, 2023.
I need a motion, please.
Motion.
I need a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public comments, speakers, we recognize you wish to address the board on agenda, I will only introduce my comments. Okay, we're gonna start with our Students of the Month, and who would like to go first? Mr. Meyer?
Thank you, Mr. Springer. Big night tonight in Hampton Bays, and before we get started, I would like to ask two of my faculty members to please come up and join me, Mrs. Parker and Mrs. Marlowe. Real big night, Mrs. Parker. It is my pleasure to introduce our May Student of the Month, Lila Holden. Lila, come on down. We've nominated Lila the June Student of the Month. Lila is a smart, talented, and all-around wonderful girl. She exemplifies a model learner and citizen. She enters the classroom each day with a positive attitude and beautiful smile, eager to learn, and have fun. She's a great disposition, a great sense of humor, with a genuine enthusiasm for life. Lila has a kind heart and is a good friend, consistently displaying empathy and compassion for others. She's exceptionally considerate and helpful with classmates. One of her many positive character traits that is most noticeable is her flexibility in accepting others. Lila gets along literally with everyone. Lila is respectful, responsible, always ready to learn. She's a family who enriches her, fosters a love of learning, and provides special family activities. Her favorite being spending summers in German. She's very proud of her mother's native country and is able to speak a bit of German herself. Lila has lots of school spirit. During our spirit week, she can be seen dressing up like an old lady on the Hundred Day or a model of her favorite pajamas, the Pajama Daddy. She entered our science fair and won a ribbon, and then can be seen found cheerleading for the Badminton Flag Football Team, as well as marching with her softball team in our Memorial Day parade. Whatever the school activity, Lila is all in. She's very creative and well-rounded, and enjoys piano lessons and dance, specifically hip-hop, tap, jazz, and ballet. Lila loves her new puppy and her older brother Jack, and speaks to them fondly. She's very confident and assured in her demeanor, and not only is she a great student, a fluent reader and writer, but a future leader. She's a great role model in and outside of the classroom. We are so happy to have had her in first grade this year. Lila has a great future ahead of her, and we can't wait to see all that she can accomplish. Congratulations, Lila. Okay, we get two Students of the Month this month, which I love. So we also have Madison Fallow. Madison Fallow. Madison is a smart, thoughtful, and hard-working kindergarten girl. Her love for learning is contagious and continues to inspire her peers and teachers. We can always count on Madison to participate in class, make thoughtful observations, and help others. Madison is a leader in the classroom and exemplifies a model learner and citizen. Madison is always showing kindness in the classroom while providing respect to all and a great sense of humor. Madison's favorite activity in the school is story time. Not only does Maddie enjoy listening to stories, but she also enjoys writing stories. Madison loves nonfiction books about animals and wrote a whole book by herself about animal facts. If the writing doesn't end there, be sure to look out for her fiction story about a girl that comes alive. Maddie is already on her way to being a published author one day. When Maddie grows up, she wants to be a teacher, just like Mrs. Marlowe. But she'd also like to teach the big kids how to do math. We know Madison is a great teacher, as she already shows the skills of a mini teacher in her kindergarten class. In school, Maddie loves art classes and drawings, surprise pictures, and she likes to gift for her gifts for friends and family. She has a big heart and spreads kindness each and every day. When Madison is not in school, she loves to stay busy. One of her favorite activities is playing dolls and swinging outside with her dog, Rona. When she's not playing outside, she loves to dance, hip-hop, and ballet. She also has a blast at T-Ball with Mom and Dad as her coaches. Madison is a pleasure to have at Hampton Bays Elementary School. We're truly honored to have Madison smile with us in kindergarten each day. Thank you, Madison, for all your hard work and continue to make us proud each day. We cannot wait to see all the great things you will accomplish. Your journey has just begun. Congratulations.
All right, I would like to call out Aiden Bonilla for our May Student of the Month from the middle school. Aiden is an exceptional fifth-grade student. He is someone who truly embodies the joy of learning and the spirit of exploration. He is a shining example of dedication, creativity, and enthusiasm in the classroom. Aiden has a passion for learning. He genuinely loves school and embraces every opportunity to expand his knowledge. His favorite subjects are art and social studies, where he expresses himself through artistic talents and explores the complexities of the world we live in. Aiden's curiosity knows no bounds. He is all, he always brings a sense of wonder to his studies. Throughout his fifth-grade year, Aiden has been fortunate to have the guidance of an incredible teacher, Mrs. Hayes. She has made a significant impact on his academic journey, providing support and encouragement every step of the way. According to Aiden, one of the highlights of this year were the many field trips he went on. His favorite was a visit to the Vanderbilt Museum. As he wandered the halls, he was captivated by the magnificent display of taxidermy animals in the Vanderbilt collection. Beyond the classroom, Aiden's talents extend, sorry, extend to the realm of music. He is learning to play the tenor saxophone. Through his musical pursuits, he demonstrates discipline, perseverance, and a deep appreciation for the arts. In his free time, Aiden explores another avenue of creativity in the kitchen. He loves to cook and experiment with recipes. He tells me that one time he made homemade pasta from scratch for his family. Although it made a huge mess, he hopes to one day have a chance to make it again soon. He also enjoys grilling with his dad. Aiden's other passion, one that brings out the superhero in him, is movies. He is an enormous fan of the Marvel Universe. Particularly the Avengers series, with his favorite film being Avengers: Endgame. Aiden possesses an impressive wealth of knowledge about each of the movies and how they connect within the Marvel Cinematic Universe. When asked about his keys to success, Aiden emphasized three critical elements: paying attention, reading books, and staying focused. These simple yet powerful principles have guided him through his academic journey, allowing him to excel as an individual. Looking toward the future, Aiden is not quite sure what he wants to do. What he aspires to perhaps be a chef, knowing his own restaurant, or possibly sees himself as a CEO leading a successful company. Aiden's drive and determination will undoubtedly propel him towards achieving these goals, whatever path he chooses. Aiden, we are all inspired by your love of learning, your artistic endeavors, and your culinary prowess. You embody a spirit of exploration, the pursuit of excellence. As you continue your educational journey, may your passion for knowledge and creativity never wane. Congratulations.
Good evening. Allow me to introduce the Student of the Month for June, eighth grader Amy Rojas-Rojas. Amy was nominated by her teachers on the Big 12 team. Amy is a serious middle school student, challenging the living environment regents and algebra regents courses this year. Her favorite subject is algebra with Miss Griffin, because as she says, it is both interesting and fun. Amy cites graphing linear fractions as her favorite unit, because she finds it as peaceful. That makes one of us. Amy is also enjoying living environment with Miss Meta, especially when she learned about how the various organ systems function and was especially intrigued by how enzymes in the digestive system work. Outside of the school day, Amy enjoys time with friends and family, especially when she can play a casual game of volleyball. When I asked her to name a favorite book, author, genre, or series, she paused, explaining to me, "I read a lot." Once she narrowed down her choices, she finally selected a dystopian thriller series by Tahara Mahfi, a New York Times bestselling author. Amy's read the first of the three books in the series and looks forward to more. We can all add that to our summer reading list. After the completion of middle school and high school, Amy is looking forward to attending college, perhaps to study law, so she may help people defend people's rights. She's also an avid follower of court cases that grab the headlines. What advice does Amy offer to students who are coming from other places to attend HBMS as a new student? She offered this simple wisdom: "Don't stress, enjoy your time here." Brilliant. Congratulations, Amy. Best wishes on your upcoming regents exams this week. We're proud of your accomplishments and look forward to seeing your continued success in high school.
Thank you. It is my pleasure to introduce the June Student of the Month of Hampton Bays High School, Alan Canales. Before I start, I would like to recognize Alan as having served his final day as a Hampton Bays High School student. Alan was recommended by his teachers because he works hard, cares about people, and is always willing to lend a hand when needed. He is respectful to all and deserves to be recognized as Student of the Month. Alan is currently enrolled in the Bozies Autobody Tech Program at HB Ward. Alan will continue this program in the fall and complete the two-year program next spring. Alan has had a very active career on the Hampton Bays athletics fields. Alan is a three-sport athlete and loves soccer, basketball, and baseball. He played soccer since his freshman year, joined the varsity baseball team in his junior year, and joined the varsity basketball team just this year. When Alan reflects back on his favorite moments from his high school career, this year's homecoming game is something he will always remember. Playing underneath the lights in the featured game of homecoming week was something he found to be incredibly exciting. The team packed off an awesome homecoming week with a victory in front of home crowd that packed out with interest. Alan is appreciative of all the people that have helped him throughout his high school career. First, he would like to thank his guidance counselor, Mrs. Crusay, for always looking out for him, and Ms. Deeds for her continued help with his academics, especially math. When Alan was sharing some advice for younger students, he stressed how important homework completion was during high school. He said if he was struggling with homework assignments, he always knew he could turn to people like Ms. Deeds to help him work through anything he was confused about. Alan would also like to thank his parents for always supporting him and being there for him in every way possible. Once again, our Hampton Bays High School June Student of the Month, Alan.
All right, we will now move on to the retirees and we'll go to Mr. Clemson.
Good evening. This really is the very best board meeting of the year. From Maddie in kindergarten to Alan in 12th grade and everything in between, it's a celebration of the entire school year, which for seniors culminated today, and for the rest of us will culminate in eight more wake-ups before the end of the school year. So I want to thank you all for being here, families especially, and also to the many, many colleagues who are in the room right now. Because this is what we call, this meeting, we call this the professional cycle of an educator meeting. This is where we recognize our retirees and thank them for tremendous years of service and significant impact for kids in Hampton Bays from kindergarten through 12th grade, in offices, on the fields, and everywhere else throughout the campus. It's also our opportunity to highlight our tenure candidates and the tenure recommendations that we'll make tonight, board members. And these are individuals who the Hampton Bays community and school district are making a professional commitment to. And so as we recognize these retirees, they are quite literally passing the torch to the next generation. In addition, I look around the auditorium and I see some very new faces, as in the personnel section, we're going to vote on some new hires today. We're going to have all of the new hired faculty and staff members with us at our August board meeting, so you can meet them and spend some time with them. But tonight, we're going to recognize our retirees and our tenure candidates. On behalf of the Board of Education, and they'll share their congrats as well, we thank you for being part of the Hampton Bays community, being the Hampton Bays community, and making an impact. I'm gonna ask our principals to celebrate our retirees, and then we will move to our tenure candidates. So let's start at Hampton Bays Elementary School with Mr. Meyer.
Thank you, Mr. Clemson. I'm very lucky that I get to say this every year before retiring speeches, but it's another case where I really, I don't want anyone that's retiring to retire. And I always think that's the greatest compliment you can ever give anyone. You want everyone to keep working together, you want to keep the team the same. Unfortunately, that's not life, but all three of these people tonight I'm gonna recognize, I wish were staying with me. I'm gonna begin with my school nurse, Sue Jenkins. Sue, could you come on down? Even before COVID, being a school nurse is a challenging role, to say the least. School nurses are often the first responders to many youth issues revealed in school, including mental health challenges, broken bones, and unfortunately, yes, child endangerment situations. A hundred years ago, when I was doing my administrative internship, my principal, Ken Stanton, said to me, "Marlowe, your three best friends need to be your secretary, your head historian, and your school nurse." Sue and I have been great friends, however, not best friends. Because I repeatedly have asked her to take me out sailing on our boat, she promises and promises, however, the invitation never appears. Seriously, it's exhausting to even remember how much Sue did during the various peaks of the pandemic. Every day, Sue promotes a healthy and safe school environment. She cares for the entire school population and staff every day. It's definitely a retirement cliche, sailing off into the sunset. In Sue's case, it's really true. She will spend more time with her beloved family, and most importantly, grandchildren. In addition to her sailing trips, Sue has already booked a European vacation after her son's wedding. Reward of protecting the health of young students is the drive for those that pursue the profession of school nurse. Sue has excelled in educating and training our faculty and staff on specific health conditions. Students come to school with a wide variety of health conditions, including asthma, diabetes, life-threatening allergies, and much more. Sue has always informed and trained our staff on what to be aware of and to identify and prevent these conditions from escalating. She's also done an excellent job training the next generation of school nurses. Thank you, Sue Jenkins, for ten years of dedicated service to the Hampton Bays School District. I hope your next sailing adventure is everything you ever dreamed of. Congratulations. All right, I'd like to ask Bonnie Langsloch to come up and join me. Bonnie! Bonnie Langsloch has served the children of Hampton Bays Elementary School for 25 years. Bonnie had the chance to watch her long-term partner, Mrs. Eden, retire, then mentor a new teacher, Ms. McLeish. Today, we celebrate an exceptional pilot, Bonnie. As we reflect on our time as teachers, Aiden, it becomes evident that Bonnie has always been a wonderful asset to our school. She was always highly organized and reliable. Her unwavering dedication, love for the children, and professionalism have left an unbelievable mark on us. Bonnie, you've been the right hand for every team you were part of. From the moment you stepped into the classroom, everything was set up and ready to go, thanks to your incredible organizational skills. Your attention to detail and natural being prepared ensured that our days ran smoothly and efficiently. You stayed one step ahead to make sure everything was always ready and prep for the children. You have a true passion for children, and it showed in everything you did. Your ability to connect with them, to make learning enjoyable through interactive games and challenges was truly remarkable. You nurtured their minds and encouraged them to push their limits. The impact you made on their educational journey is immeasurable. Mrs. Eden had this to say: "Beyond your dedication to the children, you had a unique way of expressing your thoughts and opinions." I don't know what that really means. I don't know what that really means. Your persuasive arguments were legendary. You could always count on you to present a compelling case. Not a fan of messy painting, you reluctantly tried to get us to stick to just crayon-sized projects. Not a fan of the cold recess weather. You kept a close eye on the outside temperature and wind chill and loved to inform us every step of the way. However, what made you even more remarkable was your willingness to put aside your preferences and do what was needed for the team. You're a team player through and through, putting needs of others before your own. As you embark on this new chapter of your life, Bonnie, we can imagine you at a country music concert, tapping your feet to the rhythm, or perhaps riding off into the sunset on the back of a Harley your husband can. Whatever adventures await you, we know your passion will continue to shine through. On behalf of everyone here, I want to express our deepest gratitude for your invaluable contributions, your unwavering dedication, and the joy you have brought to our lives. Your legacy will continue to live in our heart and in the hearts of those you have touched. Many thanks and congratulations. Now, this next Saturday, I'm about to introduce an incredible day. She's run to a hospital to try to help with the birth of a grandchild. She's been all over the place and just goes to show you what kind of place, person she is. So I'd like to ask Joan Walken. Joan's been a member of the Hampton Bayes Elementary School team for 21 years. She's always prided herself on being the first to arrive for work as she eagerly prepares and awaits her first-grade students. Anytime I interact with our elementary school children, I often say, "I treat you all the exact same way that I treat my own children." Not better, not worse, the exact same way. Joan has always had that exact same philosophy. She treated every lucky child that was in her classroom over the last 21 years the exact same way, like they were her own children. Joan knows a thing or two about raising great kids because that is just what she and her husband Bob did. They raised three great sons. Christopher, who's a chiropractor in his own practice in Florida, Ryan, a school counselor in Bridgehampton, and Kyle, who's a headhunter for a pharmaceutical company in Florida. Joan always stressed three things. Babe, family, and education. Joan is going to miss all her colleagues at Hampton Bayes Elementary School. They're a second family to her, and she has enjoyed every minute with all of her colleagues. Joan has two times a year she will not miss. One, thankfully, because of technology, we've cut back. But every year, Mr. T would hold a meeting to do the old-fashioned bed square. She'd say how many years of service you have and what you've done and what you've done. Every year, filling out the bed square, Joan's password would be lost. It wasn't Mr. T to get extremely cranky. He'd be very grouchy as he searched for the missing password, but we always found it and we always came out on top. The second thing Joan isn't going to miss is our harvest parade. Every year, we enter the harvest parade the same way. Kindergarten, first, and second grade. Once again, kindergarten, first, and second grade. For some reason, every year, much like an Olympic track star, four started, Joan would be out of the kindergarten booth. She wanted to get to that harvest parade before any of it. Our kids loved her for it. They were always in the parade the longest of any class. Joan always realized the positive impact she had on her students' lives. She's a great pride knowing that if students can successfully learn foundational skills, they have a great outlook for their academic future. Joan embraced this responsibility, knowing her job is so important for the future of our society. Students and parents loved all their experiences in Joan's class. Joan's leaving has caused me a lot of problems this spring. I had to make 10 parent phone calls on par request to say she will not be here in September, and that can't happen. Joan, you're always going to feel empty without a cheerful attitude that you brought every single day. You've been a fantastic teenager, and I have cherished our working relationship every day. God bless you and your family. I want to thank Joan for 21 years of remarkable service to Stoops Hampton Bayes Elementary School. I hope your next chapter, as much as we've enjoyed sharing every minute of this with you, is just as fulfilling. Congratulations.
I'd like to ask Mrs. Diane Conti to join up.
I'd like to ask Mrs. Diane Conti to join up. Welcome also to Mrs. Conti's fan club out there. I've had the unique pleasure to have taught across the hall from Diane Conti back when the '97 win was the new thing in Hampton Bayes. At the elementary school, and again, we reunited when I became principal 13 years ago at the middle school. To this day, I can think back and remember with a smile each morning when we struck up a conversation as we stood at our doorways in the '97 win to welcome our students. And we'd say to one another, "It was always nice chatting, and we always waited a time with our kids." Diane Starr in Hampton Bayes was in 1999 as a first-grade teacher at HVES. She reinvented herself years later as a fifth-grade teacher, transitioning from elementary to HBMS along with her fifth graders. Prior to that, after briefly teaching in another district, she stepped away to run a daycare center. She has had a unique mark on being known as consistent over that time. Consistent in caring for others, especially for kids. Ask anyone who has known Diane, and they will tell you this. She is a teacher who just gets kids. She would do anything for anyone, and that includes any child or any adult on her team or in our school. She's loyal, protective, and treats her class of students and her closest coworkers like family. She's fiercely competitive, refusing to quit at anything she tries. She's a planner and a taskmaster, a true professional. And she's a firm believer in the three Rs. Yet, she is always eager and ready to learn new things, embracing and applying new technology, believing for herself and her students that knowledge is power. She lives it and models it every day for her students. Many students who have known her have been impacted by her influence. Oftentimes, sixth, seventh, and eighth graders return to visit her in the pod or in the cafeteria. Each year, high school students visit the middle school asking to see their favorite fifth-grade teacher, Ms. Conti. So what is next for Mrs. Conti? Well, includes a vacation, downtime with her husband John, their daughters, and three very lucky grandkids. One thing is for sure, is that those kids will enjoy time learning how to tackle life with their whole heart and give something their all, like Diane Conti has done for children in the last quarter of a century. Diane, while you'll be missed dearly, smile knowing that Hampton Bayes is a better place because you were here. We wish you joy, health, and happiness in this next phase of life. Thank you for the impact that you left on the students and colleagues in Hampton Bayes. Congratulations.
Good evening, everyone. I particularly enjoyed this board meeting as well as we talked about some incredible professional accomplishments. And I prepared something that I was going to read about Jackie Rossi today that I'm going to scrap and I'm going to just talk for a minute. So Jackie, why don't you come on down and join me? Jackie's going to be retiring after 24 and a half years of service in Hampton Bayes. Now, every principal can tell you, one of the things they fear most is calling one of their veteran, tenured, very professional teachers over the summer and telling them, "I'm giving away your classroom after 17 years." You actually run in fear, dodging to the parking lot and wondering what's going to happen to you. So what happened was is we had a very unique situation where I needed Jackie to start co-teaching in math. And she is a veteran, highly experienced ENL teacher who has worked with kids that have literally come from all over the world. And at that time, I was thinking to myself, wow, how is this going to go? And Jackie being the professional and compassionate person that she is, she listened to what the kids needed, and she didn't say, she said nothing other than, "Absolutely." And Jackie's been wandering around the building on a cart, and every teacher knows that when you wander around the building on a cart, you make noises, you go through the hall, and you're bringing all of your materials everywhere you go, and that's what Jackie did. She provided much more than translation services. She taught math. She taught herself math. She told me that back in the day when she was a student, that that was one of her gifts. And she really did something special for us for the last few years. And Jackie, you reinvented yourself many times over, and I could not be more impressed with how you handled that. Teaching ENL, teaching language learners, is something that requires exceptional skill. You are literally getting kids, not just on day one, but day two, day 20, day 30, day 40, whoever shows up in your room, and you're giving them whatever they need. Kids that don't speak any English whatsoever to kids that have some fairly refined skills that are going to need additional support with their writing or their reading. And Jackie did it all. She did it in some of the most diverse settings. And when she came to me a few weeks ago and said, "Hey, Chris, I'm going to retire and spend some time at home with a grandchild and with mom and doing everything she can for her family," it was a bit of a sad day. And I have to tell you, Jackie, you're going to be missed a great deal. And what you have done for the last 24 and a half years and for 17 with me as principal, I cannot thank you more. So I wish you the happiest and healthiest retirement possible. Congratulations. Okay, so I'm going to stay up for soon tenure recommendations. Very proud to present three candidates for tenure, and I'm going to bring out my brief glasses, so there's one I apologize if I can't keep anything in front of you anymore. And I think we should begin with Ms. Nicole. Nicole, why don't you come on down and join me? Nicole is the anchor of our guidance team. And I distinctly remember Eric Ferraro and I interviewing Nicole four years ago in the summer. And we met Nicole, and we wouldn't let her leave. I literally, we would not let her leave. We were so impressed with her interview, and we wanted her to be a member of this team. And I'm pretty sure you met everyone in the district within an hour and a half because we just wouldn't let her out the door. And she proved Eric and I 100% correct. She is an incredible professional who does so many things in the building. Her tenure resume, and I ask every teacher that we tenure to produce a resume, I think it was like eight pages long because I just keep asking Nicole to do things. And she does them exceptionally well. She provides direct instruction to seniors in the college planning process, both in the classroom and in the guidance office. She is our liaison to each and every BOSI. So every student that gets placed in a career technical education program, those applications, those experiences, connections with the counselors over at BOSI, all of those things go through Nicole. She is the advisor of young kids at the UNIDOS Club, and she is charged with working with kids to welcome all newcomers to Hampton Bayes. And it's part of the reason that we have such a welcoming environment, the work that Nicole does. She is the guidance counselor that serves the Hampton Bayes Alternative High School program, working with at-risk students. And for the last couple of years in that role, there have been quite a few kids that have diplomas now that would not have without her guidance, her care, and her really sensitive approach to what the kids or what they really need. Nicole grows each and every year, and I'm counting on her as my expert to get through an exceptionally complicated series of pathways, graduation, and diplomas. Nicole knows it all. She is able to translate transcripts from countries literally all over the world and make sure our kids are getting the best possible outcomes. And I could not be more proud to recommend Nicole to the Board of Education for tenure. Okay, up next is Emily Brandow. Emily, come on down. All right, so Emily is joined by what appears to be the whole science department in the back. So Emily is a member of the science department here. In particular, she is a very important member of the earth science teaching team. And what I'm going to say about Emily is that she is the poster professional for transformative growth as a teacher. We hired Emily right out of college, and she arrived here in Hampton Bayes. And I often, I think I told Emily this several times, could not be painy enough to go back to my first year of teaching. And when you first start teaching, it can be an incredible challenge. And Emily met every challenge, and then she found a new level to get to. Emily has completed her master's in TESL and immediately started collaborating with her colleagues, and I see Alexa in the back, who she co-teaches with, and is doing incredible work for language learners that are making their way through the region's requirements. And because collaborating with one teacher wasn't enough, we've got Laris Kresik in the back because Emily also co-teaches in our ICT program for students with learning disabilities. She can do it all. She is incredible at finding a way to reach students in diverse pathways. And as you can see by her colleagues and her co-teachers, she is really, really great at working as part of the team. Mr. Luce could probably speak to that because Ms. Brandow is also the co-advisor to our LEOS Club, one of the largest service organizations in Hampton Bayes. And we do some pretty impressive things there as well. If you ask me to say, hey, who in the building can you count on to just about do anything? You ask, Emily's one of those people. She proctors SATs. She chaperones everything. You'll find her here for concerts, the plays. So if I need a late proctor, I'm probably going to ask tomorrow. You know, Emily will be one of those people we know we can count on. So the science department is a better place. Hampton Bayes High School is a better place because of her. And I wholeheartedly recommend her for tenure at this time. Thank you. And I wholeheartedly recommend her for tenure at this time. Thank you. The third candidate that I'll be presenting to the Board of Education this evening is Mr. Michael Beretta. Beretta, come on down. When I think of Mr. Beretta, I also think of our College Economics Program and some of the very depth work he does with students on stock market. And I believe this is his first year here, that we had some pretty incredible outcomes. The stock market was going wild. Kids were making tons of fake money. I got a bad stock tip from Mr. Beretta along the way, so I'm not gonna recommend him for tenure. I'm sorry. So, you know, it was amazing to see the way that the kids were connecting with the world of investments and financial responsibility. And it was just a really natural fit for Mr. Beretta to teach economics. And through his content knowledge and skill and teaching expertise, we were able to get Beacon approved. And now students can take economics in their senior year for college credit. And then Mrs. McQually retired, and I was looking around the building, and I said, "You know, I think Mr. Beretta would be great at teaching AP World History." And turns out, I was right on that one. So in his first year, 92% of his students achieved a score of three or higher earning college credit. And I can tell you now, like most AP teachers, Mr. Beretta walked around the building, profusely sweating in the month prior to APs, and it's because of how much he cares. He cares an enormous amount about his students. And each and every day, I see dynamic teaching in his classroom. Someone who really loves what he does, and it comes through each and every day. Mr. Beretta is also highly involved outside of the classroom. He has been the assistant varsity track coach for both girls, winter and spring seasons. And as you heard in the recent news, we've had some pretty incredible outcomes with some of our athletes in track. And that is much to do with what Mr. Beretta does with students out on the field. He basically focuses on his effort on growth everywhere. So whether it's in the halls, in the classroom, on the track, I can count on Mr. Beretta to get that done. Much like his colleague Ms. Brando, I can ask Mr. Beretta to do anything, including be a proctoring tomorrow. But he has chaperoned senior class trips to Woodlock, he proctors the SATs. He supervises proms. He can be counted on to help this team get it done. And that is the reason I recommend him for tenure as well. I'd like to ask four people to join me up here. I'd like to ask Mrs. Calabrese, Mrs. Singler, Mrs. Studdy, and Ms. Cotton. So these four people, I can describe what they've accomplished and what they've achieved in Hampton Bays Middle School in three words. Confidence, community, and culture. That's the simplest way I can put this. But I'm not a man of few words, so I have about eight pages. Make yourself comfortable. Forgive me for writing this all down and reading. If I didn't, we'd be here for hours as I rave about our four middle school faculty members right up here with me, being presented for tenure considerations this evening. Presenting Renee Calabrese, Josephine Singler, Brittany Study, and Diana Baumkitis. There are so many remarkable things that teachers do every day. And two of our tenure candidates this evening are role models in their classrooms. Let's begin with Diana Baumkitis. She's a model of versatility and flexibility in every role she served as a middle school teacher. A proud member of the fifth grade team, she both contributes to and benefits from the aligned values and unique brand of fifth grade communication and collaboration, whether working together or to meet and address challenges the team faces together. In the classroom, she is a meticulous planner, preparing and developing tiered questions that she offers out to students. As a lead replacement teacher and a teacher serving a classroom of students accessing remote instruction from home, a co-teacher, and an MTSS interventionist, she has captured experiences to advance her expertise with each new assignment. We look forward to her deepening her expertise as an MTSS interventionist, taking her role as a learning catalyst very seriously. She uses iWriting tools and data to inform instructional decisions and measure growth in students' academic performances, monitoring student progress for MTSS Tier 3 instruction. Throughout her time with us, above all else, Ms. Baumkitis prioritizes her responsibility to build high-quality and trusting teacher-student relationships in our school community. She is proud to label her a go-to person for many fifth grade students. And I witnessed this firsthand when I observed her as a remote teacher. As I entered her classroom, all set up to welcoming students, I observed her teaching a class of students using Googling. She in the classroom and they from home. While the screen was filled with smiling fifth grade faces, I saw a teacher conducting an exemplary lesson meticulously planned and taught as if it were a room full of students. It didn't matter that the students were home. They knew as soon as the in-person school resumed, they'd have a classroom community and a warm inviting teacher who will be ready to welcome them back. To this day, that will be forever etched in my memory. And I can say, I've seen it time and time again, now in person. Now I'd like to talk about Brittany Karlock-Study. It was during her first year in Hampton Bays, it became clear that Ms. Study knew the meaning of prioritizing trusting relationships with students and their families in uncertain times. Working closely with co-teachers and team members, she maintained school-home partnerships through personal phone calls, consistent, well-checked phone calls, and open Google Meet digital check-ins. She created a sense of classroom community and fostered a sense of belonging for all students. Ms. Study knows, sorry, showed she was there for her students and her colleagues followed her lead. Serving as a point person for grade level of teachers with coordinated home visits, porch present care packages were delivered to each eighth grade student's family residence to end an uncertain school year on a high note for outgoing eighth graders. Ms. Study is humble and accepting craves for being an adult advocate for individual students. However, as for to share a story about student success, she will glow with pride for the achievement of students with disabilities and their families while celebrating the meaningful human connections that helped that personal best emerge. I had the privilege of seeing her impact up close when she served as a go-to person for a student who was navigating challenging times outside of school. She worked nonstop with the parents, the support staff, and the student with a constant focus on that student resuming a positive and successful time once back in the middle school. A true testament to her character is how she eagerly follows the journeys of former students too. Her belief in the power of a teacher's impact and the power of small acts of kindness helped promote a positive and supportive school experience for each student and an overall positive school culture for all students at HBMS. The 2020s will forever be etched in my memory as the era when health came to include the physical, mental, emotional, and behavioral aspects of living a good middle school life full of purpose, promise, potential, all parts of adolescence pursuing their personal best. Mental health professionals play an instrumental role in the social-emotional well-being of adolescents, especially these days. I'd like to speak next about Josephine Singler. A firm believer in building deep and meaningful personal relationships in middle school, Josephine Singler is a school counselor who enjoys connecting face-to-face or voice-to-voice over the telephone with adolescents and their families. She has successfully worked to remove any stigma of an adolescent seeking to address or improve their mental health, because students relate to her and trust her warm and direct approach for helping them. Individuals and groups of students often seek her out, knowing she is someone who will always make time to help them. No problem is too small. As a co-facilitator of the Bienvenidos Club, Ms. Singler builds a sense of community, especially for our newest entrants to middle school whose primary or preferred language is Spanish. This space for students is an important one, where they can discuss their hopes and dreams, as well as their obstacles and challenges they face in and out of school with a trusted adult in Mrs. Singler. She's a go-to person to so many students, because our students know how much she prides herself on the importance of celebrating small victories. She is an asset to parents and staff members who benefit from having a bilingual school counselor who builds and sustains the school-home partnerships that are critical to our adolescents' success. Some examples of the work that Ms. Singler has teamed up on with her colleagues, Mrs. De Silva, Mrs. Catalano, and Mrs. Calabrese, to achieve include Wellness Mondays, Start With Hello Week, coffee with counselors, errands-alaw, classroom workshops, restorative practices that help teachers build community in the classroom, and Empath School AIS for academics and social-emotional learning, as well as contributing to our school being recognized as a two-time No Place For Hate School. This scratches the surface and does not include all the work of the learning support team that provides students with academic and SEDL support along with their families for basic human needs both in and out of school. Last but certainly not least, I'd like to speak about Renee Calabrese. As anyone in the HBMS community knows, ask anyone in the HBMS what counselors do. Based on their experience, their answers are bound to surprise you. They may say, based on knowing Mrs. Calabrese, that social workers, host and DJ, cell phone-free dance parties have crossed out, where they may sponsor a club or activity when small groups of students who are having similar experiences or completely different experiences come together to understand themselves and one another a little bit better than they did before. Maybe social workers coach a team, going from not being able to run due to low tryout numbers to three years later, when they're beating South Hampton and tying Center Merritt's Super Bowl. Maybe they know their social worker as the announcement bingo lady, who also, by the way, loves ranch dressing, YOLO Starburst, and Thursdays. Or they're excited to put what they've learned about how to speak Spanish into practice, like Mrs. Calabrese, showing they can relate to kids, their backgrounds, and their willingness to take risks as learners. This represents our middle school social worker, Renee Calabrese. But perhaps best of all, because she is approachable, treats students with dignity and respect, and has a sense of humor that is warm and welcoming, on a regular basis, students can be observed visiting her office, approaching her on the pod, and the hallways, and in the cafeteria. And when they do, they can often be heard saying, "Ms. Calabrese, come sit with me." This does not happen every day with everyone in middle school. However, it does with Renee Calabrese. And is a true testament to the work of a strong and reliable middle school social worker. Someone who has successfully made it okay to have a strong connection with a person at school they trust, even the social worker. Together, these four individuals standing by my side represent the heart, and in many cases, the future of HBMS. They represent our students' stories and elevate them, so we notice and celebrate the small moments that lead to big outcomes for HBMS kids. These individuals here tonight have embodied these moments and have boosted these stories to my attention, and it's made me a better principal and a better person. It is for this reason that I strongly recommend Mrs. Renee Calabrese, Mrs. Josephine Singler, Ms. Brittany Study, and Ms. Diana Baumkitis for tenure this evening. Thank you. Back to little people. I wanna play for you a one-minute video that is being played around New York State this week. And then introduce you to, with Mr. Carlson and Mr. Meyer, some really awesome Hampton Bays fourth graders.
This is so exciting. This is the very first statewide elementary math competition for New York State. We have 150 children from first grade through fifth grade here today, with parents and teachers and administrators all to compete together at Sudi Alder.
Wait, students from literally every quarter of the state here. North country, out west, southern, interior, the island, New York City, who are here to compete today. Really exciting opportunity for students to show what they know, what they can do when it comes to mathematics.
Students who excel in math today will be the innovators and problem solvers of tomorrow. So please, continue to pursue your passions, your interests with curiosity.
Why, you think I showed you that? Please, it's Mr. Meyer. All right, thanks, Ms. Clemerson. I'd like to begin by thanking our Assistant Superintendent, Mr. Paulson, our Math Coordinator, Ms. Nekozo, teachers Dominique DiMaggio, Victoria Rana, and our Coach Advisor, Mr. Fritzon. I'd like to ask you all, please, to come up and join me. All right, this was an incredible opportunity for our statewide elementary math tournament. The New York State Education Department and First in Math joint forces to bring a statewide elementary tournament to New York State. This is the First in Math statewide elementary mathematics, consisted of a virtual regional contest and an in-person statewide championship event. The virtual regional contest focused on the popular 24 game series and featured in the First in Math online program Skill Set. These games test fact fluency, problem solving, procedural fluency, and other critical math skills. At the statewide championship event, students use game cards competitively in a group setting to demonstrate through modeling their conceptual understanding. We had five students from Hampton Bays Elementary School qualify for the New York State Math Tournament. And at this time, I'd like to invite them up. Wesler Escobar Colancha. Wesler. Jack Gubner. William Lablissager. Inzo Martinez. And last but certainly not least, Annabelle Ramsey. Now, the team of Jack Gubner, William Lablissager, and Annabelle Ramsey went up to Albany, competed in the state tournament, and earned a third-place win. Now, this is a little arrogant, but I do like it. Our Coach Advisor, Mr. Fritzon, much like then-coach of the Los Angeles Lakers, Pat Riley, in 1987, Riley guaranteed another, another medal, another, I'm sorry, another championship the next year. And Mr. Fritzon has promised a championship next year.
Okay, is Ms. Mazer here?
Good evening, everyone. I have the pleasure to introduce a student who was a former Hampton Bay student. He graduated eighth grade from Hampton Bay's Middle School in 2019. It's an honor and pleasure to be one of his former music teachers. I have actually gotten the chance to see him marching band field of Northport High School, doing an amazing show with his fellow students, and he is a graduating senior this year who has come back to donate some music instruments to the Hampton Bay's Middle School. So I would like to welcome Zachary Hilafar back to Hampton Bay. I'm going to ask him to speak a little bit about what this was, but he had a community service project that he was doing, so Zachary, fill your eyes.
Hi, of course, I can do the same. My name's Zach. I went to middle school here, and that's when I first got introduced to Ms. Mazer and the music program here, and that's what really sparked my music passion. So that's the whole reason why I started doing this project in the first place. So I am a part of the IB Diploma Program at Northport High School. If you don't know what that is, it's essentially like, it's like AP, but it's more of a centralized international group that basically excels in giving education to students to get them ready for college. So through this program, I was able to do another program in the program called IB Diploma. Now, this program is a very rigorous course that comes with many different requisites, one of them being this program called CAS. CAS is essentially Creativity Activity Service, and the basis of it means to do a project. This is my project. I wanted to give back to the school that taught me everything that I know about music today. So basically, yeah, so Ms. Mazer right here is my first-ever music teacher, and now I have so many more to give thanks to for this, but I was given so many instruments, way more than I thought. It's not like a ton, it's probably like seven or eight, but it's a lot more than I thought I was going to get, considering the fact that music instruments are expensive, they're not things that you can just find lying around. So the fact that I got this many just to give back to students who, you know, don't know music yet, or those who are continuing with music, the fact that I can give back to those students is a pleasure to me. So, yeah, that's really good.
All right, we're going to take a short break, but I want to thank everyone for coming also. I just, congratulations to the children, the teachers, the retirees, everybody involved tonight, so thank you again, and we'll be back in a few minutes. So thank you again, and we'll be back in a few minutes. ... change, not doing the first and second reading, but making that change for the exams that begin tomorrow, that for this school year, students taking Regents exams have what New York State is calling a "special appeal." It ends this year, and districts have the opportunity to opt back into it. And since that accommodation exists for kids, we believe that we're recommending that we apply here as well, so that a student who receives a 50, between a 50 and a 64 on the Regents exam, but is passing the class due to coming out of COVID, we're still shaking off some of those tablets, that they will, their transcript will have what's called SA, which will appear as a special exemption, as given by New York State. This is my story, which you see out in the auditorium, has been selected for this New York State School Board's annual convention presentation. We try to get up there and share our story, but specifically, we're sharing this is my story, which is our story, of our E&amp;L students and their journeys to the United States. So, thank you to Ms. Toya, and Ms. Avatla, Ms. Bishop, the high school team, and Mr. Carlson Shepherd did that project through this year as well. So, we're shuffling off to Buffalo at the end of October. A resolution tonight to appropriate up to $170,000 from the 2012 Focus on Facilities referendum that's left over for a project that Mrs. Fox has been growing, fertilizing, or cliches, you can see what I did there, Christopher. We had a hothouse, a plastic, heavy plastic structure intended to be temporary and was, and showed signs of its end of life over the last year, and so it was taken down. And when we passed this bond referendum in 2012, the community authorized up to $16.8 million to do about 69 different projects. By law, you, school districts have the option to create what's called a Schedule B project list. So that's at the end of the day, when all the funds, all the projects are done, the crumbs that are left over can be put together for a predetermined list. So we determined this list many, many years ago, in 2012, and had piecemealed our way through developing an amazing school garden, community garden, and Ms. Fox has really taken the ball and running with creating a school community garden. And so tonight, we're taking some of those crumbs, 170 of the 270,000 that's left, to put a permanent structure up that looks like that. And that resolution will allow us to construct that middle school greenhouse that comes off of state contract. And then I also circled the elementary school playground upgrades, because that was on our list as well. But the COVID grant, something we could not have foreseen in 2012, the COVID grant, we were able to earmark money for that. So we do have a meeting next week with American Recreation Company, which is the Long Island vendor for playgrounds, and did our work many years ago on how to build onto that existing structure. For the size of the elementary school, we've probably outgrown that playground, so we'll be able to add pieces to it as well. So that really takes off a number of our items. Each year during this post-COVID era, we present our federal stimulus funding plans. And I've done this a few times through the budget hearings, because if we want to have this conversation parallel, we're spending the general fund, which is stated in property taxes, but then we also have a considerable spending plan for several million dollars of COVID relief funds as well. And so, just to quickly recap, we had about $100, $1.9 million in the initial coronavirus response or relief supplemental appropriation act, we call it CRISA. CRISA was signed into law in the height of the pandemic, December 2020, and we received that amount of money, which must be liquidated by September 30th, or committed by September 30th, and then liquidated soon thereafter. Expenditures were largely for summer learning, after-school programs, academic, social, emotional health, reading recovery, learning loss recovery, the ability to repair facilities, to build out our educational technology platforms, and then also to, at that time, we would have been able to prevent, prepare, respond to COVID-19. We have spent nearly every dollar of that to make sure that we are outfitted with the most up-to-date Chromebooks. We did that quickly, but then they will die at some point, right? So, these funds allowed us to get ourselves, our house in order, so that the Chromebooks that now K through 12 are issued are on a cycle, and that cycle can be replaced with, in increments, not all at once, like the big bites we had to take in March of 2020. We were able to complete the build-out of our literacy program, Fongis and Penel, with writing kits, leveled readers, and then there's just a few crumbs left in this grant that we'll clean up in the summer and September, some final supplies for the reading and math intervention programs. The ESAR component of the federal grant is much larger, $1.8 million almost, and so we reported on the '21-'22 expenses at last June's board meeting. In '22-23, we were able to, through this grant fund, three AIS teachers provide quarantine instruction, the outdoor classroom that we've reported on a few times this fall, or this winter, which will be constructed in the summer and fall of this year, some support staff hours for AIS at the elementary school, air conditioning in eight rooms at the high school, COVID recovery instructional time, half a full-time salary for a reading teacher, equipment for our Life Skills Academy, testing society investments, and then some miscellaneous supplies, almost a million dollars. So we'll close the books this year on those expenses by June 30th. And then next year, we plan to, and again, next year is September 30th, so it does come quickly, elementary and pre-K playground upgrades, some additional garden restoration. So the money that we just talked about will take here at the greenhouse, but just across the walkway is the garden. And so, there are some funds as Mrs. Fox builds out the school garden curriculum to complement the program, or the facility that exists there. And then some additional summer school expenses and assessments offered, about half a million, just short of half a million dollars there, and that will bring that grant to a close. Later on in COVID world, in March 2021, Congress passed the American Rescue Plan Act, which we call ARPA. In Hampton, Dager, we're giving $2 million, just a little bit more than $2 million, and those funds, also similar allowable uses, we have until September 30th of 2024 to spend those. A minimum amount must be used for learning recovery, and then, but you'll see we're using more for that purpose, and then there are other allowable uses. In '22-23, the grant was able to support the library courtyard renovation, elementary school, eight classroom, air conditioning project, AIS coordinators to build out our remediation and support program at the middle and the high school, reading program materials and training program called SPIRE, which is primarily focused on dyslexia support, but does benefit in many ways for our kids. We were able to build out supplies and training in all three buildings, late bus transportation for AIS, morning SEL counseling and wellness sessions at the elementary school, and then additional support for summer school readings review and the alternative high school. The special ed portion of that ARPA grant is funding the Life Skills Academy toilet room, which we did mention in previous sessions. Next year, our anticipated investments, about three-quarters of a million dollars, include two social workers, a halftime reading teacher, UPK teacher assistant, a social worker, community engagement teacher assistant too, to help with the community partnerships and the rapid response that's needed. Oftentimes, social workers are in crisis response situations while they're trying to do an in-class session that the principals talked about tonight, or pulling them in a lot of different directions at once. So we have the unique opportunity to provide a little bit more support with key these closet, the food pantry initiatives like that, that needs tending to on a regular basis, not when we're just not in crisis. Our middle school interventionist teacher as well, and then credit recovery and late transportation. So, between the senior leadership team at district office managing this grant and the others, does become important, because when the fund, when we hit those gates, these funds turn into pumpkins, and we can't use them anymore. And so we don't want to leave any money on the table. And we'll fulfill our statutory requirement to have this conversation at least once a year in a quick form like this, but it's also posted on our website, and it all comes with the big asterisk. Everything we do has asterisk on it, that plans are something to change as needs change. And so, sometimes priorities change, costs change, but we will make sure that the goals that we have for the grant are covered within the grant themselves. An extremely busy next week and a half, week in just a few days. You have your calendars, board members, so we're in celebration mode. Exams start tomorrow, I think it is for Morgan, for a very intricate proctoring schedule. We have a dance coming up this week at the middle school. We're closed on Monday in observance of the Juneteenth holiday, and then Tuesday through Saturday, you guys will hold your breath and just go. We'll start with the bridge parade on Tuesday, six o'clock over the Paw Park Bridge. Wednesday's great heat moving up. Thursday is prom at Canoe Place Inn. And Friday is our senior works here. We are north of $150,000 of local money that kids will be receiving on the 23rd, so hopefully that'll grow. We're still shaking some people down, and we're very grateful for our benefactors who support our kids in really significant ways. And then Saturday morning under the Big Tent. Big Tent goes up Friday, right? This Friday, so we'll start to see it up. Middle school is under there on Wednesday, and then we're back there Saturday morning to hand up diplomas and celebrate the class of 2023. Any questions on the report? Thank you. Good evening again. Quick report this month. First thing was the transportation audit. I had mentioned this at our last board meeting, I was a little concerned. It was the first time we'd ever had a transportation audit, and when was I pleased? The only things that really were issuing this audit were not so much what we do, or that we do them, but rather that we didn't have records as long as no others would have liked, or that we didn't keep a record for our bus safety drills. Minor things, easy to rectify, so that being taken care of. The board is asked tonight to please approve the audit and the corrective action plan, so we can send it up to the state as reported. Second thing is an update on driver's education. We have a driver's education vehicle, and we have a contract with a local driver's education school to do the in-car program. Our annual application is up at SED. Hopefully we'll be back in the next few days. And our summer driver's aid program is set to start on June 26th. Cost is a little bit higher than pre-COVID. We're at $700 a student for students enrolled in the district, $800 for those not enrolled in the district. Limited space on this first go-around, probably only 16 spots, and probably just all the district students, that's where we are. And then, our cafeteria service will be going out to bid next week. We are required to bid every five years, it's actually been seven because of COVID, so we're going out to bid, and that's all I have on this. Thank you. All right. We're gonna do a consent agenda from 4A to 4I. You need a motion?
Motion.
You need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Services. 5A and B. You need a motion, please?
Motion.
I need a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry, C.
Yeah, 5C, I'm sorry.
I need a motion for C, please.
Motion.
Need a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, for 6A to 6L, but we're taking out H, because I would be choosing myself from H. So I need a motion.
Motion.
I need a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then I need one for, I need a motion for 6H.
Motion.
And I need a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Before we move on, I just want to introduce in the back, Melissa Davies, who will be taking the position of middle school interventionist in the fifth and sixth grades. So, thanks for sticking with us tonight.
Thank you.
We will do consent agenda from 7A to 7F. There's no question. I need a motion.
Motion.
I need a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. You want to give it a second?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. All right, we're gonna do each one individually, so we will start with number one, Michael Beretta. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Number two, Emily Brando. All in favor?
Aye.
Renee Calabrese. All in favor?
Aye.
Nicole Dalton Santana. All in favor?
Aye.
Josephine Sinclair. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Brittany Stoy. All in favor, Stoy, for this session? All in favor?
Aye.
And Diana Vakatas. All in favor?
Aye.
And we move back to public comment. Persons may adjust to board of education on any matters of interest or concern. Board president will recognize all speakers, time limits may be imposed upon the agenda meetings. Okay. With that said, I need a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Motion.
Don't everybody jump. If you guys want to stay, we can stay. All in, I need a second, sorry.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Motion passes, meeting is adjourned. Ladies and gentlemen, have a great night.
Thanks, guys up there.
Thank you.
Thank you.